Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the August 22nd City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Legions.
Let me release this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristy, can I have a roll call, please?
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork. Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morset.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Okay, next we have approval of the minutes from the August 8th regular meeting.
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next we'll have approval of the bills.
Mr. Mayor and Council, excuse me. Mr. Mayor and Council, I move for the approval of the bills in the amount of $698,726.38, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Next we'll move on to public comments. If there's anybody in your audience has anything they'd like to stand up and talk about, now would be the time. Okay, we will move on and... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Morset.
From time to time, my fellow council members have, in fun, given me a little bit of a hard time about how diligent I am with liquor license in town. We had a great example of two bar owners in town who did a great thing twice, and I'm referring to Dan Soufield Shooter at Shooter's Pub and Jason Marks at Bros'. They were able to obtain false IDs from the same person and prosecute, or not prosecute them, but press charges against them under what is referred to as the Brown Jug case, which carried in a $1,000 fine. They were able to collect that money. After lawyers' fees, they ended up both with $500. Their goal was not to make money on the situation, so they in turn donated it to the River Falls Food Pantry. So we had two great situations of bar owners in town, one being very diligent about underage drinking, which is something I'm greatly concerned about, and I know others in the council are, and then to donate it to the food shelf is another further example of just a great, great thing that they did. So I don't know if the chief has anything to add. I know he was involved in that. If Chief Young had anything to comment on as well, but I thought that was great, and I thought it was worthy of a comment.
Thank you very much for making that public comment. It does mean a lot to me, and we do work diligent, the officers in the police department and with the bar owners, to do our best to make sure that underage drinkers aren't in the bars, and we have a great collaboration with them, and I concur with you that it was nice for them to donate the money that they received because it could've went to the bar itself or the employees. It was a good job. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, now I'd like to close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance number 2017-17 to amend the official zoning map. This is for Sullivan Court. This is the second reading of the ordinance to rezone the land in the vicinity of Sullivan's Court. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say about this in the audience? Otherwise, we'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We adopt ordinance number 2017-17, amending the official zoning map Sullivan Court.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have a quick comment. I was just curious if there was any residents who had any concerns after the last planning commission.
I can speak to it as a planning commission representative. There were none. I think the... Go ahead, Brandy. You're better suited to... or the mayor, laws.
We didn't receive any comments from any property owners in the 300 feet. The only person that I did speak to was a representative of the DNR who responded to the letter that we sent them, and they just had a clarification question, and once I explained to her what the situation was, she was 100% in favor of us moving forward with it.
Thanks, Brandy. Any other questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, next we move on to consent agenda. We'll acknowledge the following minutes. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Mike.
The following minutes: the planning commission from 7:18, the housing authority from 7:12, the EMS advisory board from 6:05, the park and rec advisory board from 7:19, the historic preservation commission from 7:12, and number three is a resolution approving city assistance for art on the Kenny event. This resolution would approve the city assistance for the event. Anybody want to pull anything? Okay, I want to entertain a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve the consent agenda, two items A through E and three.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll go on to reports. Our first report is from investigator Ryan Miller. He's going to talk about drug enforcement in River Falls.
Steve. All right, for those that do not know me, I'm Ryan Miller. I'm an investigator with the city of River Falls here, the police department. I've been with the city of River Falls for 11 years now, August 2006. I was assigned to investigations in December of 2014. Part of my assignment is going to be on the St. Croix Valley Drug Task Force, so tonight I'm here to kind of present what I've been doing since December of 2014 through today's date, kind of give you a brief history and what the task force does, how they operate, and what kind of success we have had. So for a brief history, I was started in the 1980s. It was originally found by St. Croix and Polk Counties only. Pierce County was not involved in that. Eventually, Pierce County did get involved, and each county had one investigator assigned to it. St. Croix added a second investigator for a total of four investigators throughout the entire Pierce, St. Croix, and Polk Counties in 1997, and in 2015, 16, and 17, each city, Hudson, River Falls, and New Richmond, each added an investigator as well to bring our total investigators on this task force to seven. The task force funds were originally split up equally between all the counties, and then they would disperse it. Right now, that's not how we work things. We use a voucher system, and I'll get into that in a second. The funding levels right now, when it first started, was $100,000-plus for the task force. That has been reduced greatly down to about $56,476 on what we call the JAG grant. That money is used for overtime reimbursements, software purchases, equipment purchases we need with the task force. That equipment purchases would be bugs or wires that we use. We use software such as Cellhawk. That's a program that I use quite frequently here in my investigations, not only in the task force, but property crimes as well, where I can use cellphone data history to track a subject's location, and then obviously for overtime reimbursement, so that's not a burden on each city that has a member part of the task force. The state of Wisconsin has also applied for two separate grants. One is a methamphetamine grant, the other is an opiate grant. The methamphetamine grant, both, actually, both grants are two years long. The methamphetamine one was for $50,000 a year, in each year, and the opiate one was for $26,700. The opiate grant was for 2016 and 2017 is the end one, and in the meth grant, 2017 and 2018 is when it ends. They don't know if they're going to continue to get the opiate grant and the meth grant in the future, but the JAG grant, the $56,000, has been a fairly stable number. But Wisconsin DOJ, Department of Justice, has said if it's available, they are going to apply for those opiate grants and the meth grant. As far as opiates go, that's going to be any of your prescription pain pills and heroin cases. So anytime we do a search warrant or an activity that has to do with opiates, we, instead of taking it out of our normal funds at $56,000, we'll take it out of that opiate grant first. It kind of gives us a little more to work with. So as far as the history goes, the population in Pierce, Polk, and St. Croix Counties has increased over the years. Projected in 2020 is 188,000, and the number of drug cases also has increased significantly, all the way from 2009 with only 59 cases, all the way up to 2015 where it jumped to 230, I believe, 213. That is just methamphetamine. The bottom line is going to be your opiate. It's going to be your heroin cases. That's been fairly stable all the way through. Meth cases by county, so this is going to be for 2011. As you can see, right here, this is our counties right here, were fairly low. The blue is going to be approximately 10 crime lab cases for methamphetamine analyzed that year. The pink or light red color, which is going to be Pierce County, is going to be one, two, under 10. You jump ahead to 2015, and we have a much different picture. We're all dark green. The dark green is 30-plus methamphetamine cases in that given year. So there's been a significant increase in the state of Wisconsin over here from going to trainings and just from my observations and working in the field, methamphetamine is a huge problem over in western Wisconsin. The opiates, heroin, is going to be more on the eastern side of the state. So as far as how is methamphetamine getting to Wisconsin, we're actually on a direct pipeline because we live so close to the Twin Cities, and I-94 comes right through our territories. That's generally how it's coming in. Drug cartels are shipping it up to the Twin Cities. It goes from the Twin Cities mainly down I-94. It'll go spread off in smaller amounts in our region, the St. Croix Valley area. It'll go to Eau Claire, and then generally from there, Madison, Milwaukee, Chicago. So our current organization right now is, St. Croix is the lead agency in this. They are responsible for the grant applications, so the methamphetamine grant, the opiate grant, and the JAG grant, and they're also responsible for the administration. So any rules that apply, and we will see some of the rules that are stipulated in those in a second, they have to make sure that everybody's following the rules so that the monies and funds are accounted for. The administrative control of the task force is actually done by a board of directors. Currently, it's overseen by six members. It's made up of a county sheriff of each county and a police chief from each of the three counties, and they meet quarterly. Continuing on with our current organization, we have the board of directors on top. Sorry if the font is a little small. The next thing, step down's going to be the director, and then the new position, which we just started this year, which is the commander spot. The director is Sergeant Brent Standard. He's a sergeant with the St. Croix County Sheriff's Department. He does the day-to-day administrative functions. So that's your, the grant applications and making sure the funds go where they need to go, and making sure that we turn in all paperwork that we need to account for those funds. Commander spot, that has been filled by investigator Justin Johnson. He's with the St. Croix County Sheriff's Department as well. Right now, we're currently working on, working out what that commander spot is going to be responsible for, but as a general day-to-day, he's going to be in charge of day-to-day operations. So it's going to be organization of search warrants, controlled buys, how we kind of organize things, make sure that we're not spreading ourselves too thin, and we can devote enough time to each case to get a successful prosecution. Then we have the task force coordinator. There's one coordinator for each county who's in charge there, basically the liaison for all the municipalities to the task force. So if the municipality's interested, they can talk to that coordinator and get the information, so it's not all put on the director and the commander or the board of directors. And then finally, we have the task force investigators. That's where I come in. I'm investigator assigned to the drug task force. So here's kind of how it sits. The director and the commander are kind of at the same level, and then you have the coordinators and the team members with the task force board up on top. So reporting, so the, with the rules for the grants, there's a reporting system we have to go through. It's called ACIS. It's a data management site for, that the Wisconsin Department of Justice uses. We have to report all drug arrests, and that's not just the drug arrests that we make. That's, I'm in charge of every single drug arrest made in the city of River Falls. Every officer then fills out a sheet of paper and turns it in, and we report the drug arrests, the weights, amounts seized, all search warrants executed, all seized assets, so money, cars, you name it, whatever we decide to take, and also all cellphone download data. So part of a drug case, we do download cellphones. What that means is we basically make a forensic copy of somebody's cellphone, as we know that traffickers tend to use their cellphones to facilitate drug deals. So as far as the River Falls cases, these cases all have direct connections with River Falls and originated and ended in River Falls here for the most part. In 2015, there's three major cases that we had. One was a 21 plant marijuana grow. The next one was an ounce-level methamphetamine supplier, and another one, we had a multi-ounce-level methamphetamine supplier. And what I say by ounce level, that means that person buys and distributes an ounce very quickly. Multi-ounce is that person's normally purchasing their methamphetamine through, you know, two-plus ounces at a time and then distributing that, so each level goes up from there. The pictures, marijuana grow up on top. This right here, both these were in the same, it's approximately $500 cash in which he had on his person with the methamphetamine that was seized. In 2016, there are two major cases I wanted to highlight to you guys. One was a pound-level marijuana supplier. I found one person who ordered a half-pound of marijuana every two weeks and distributed that in the city of River Falls, and then on top of that, through the investigation, I was able to identify their supplier who was ordering, who was selling the half-pounds every two weeks, and on top of that, they're also selling larger quantities to other people as well, and we were able to successfully prosecute that one, that person as well. We also had an ounce-level methamphetamine supplier. Again, this was somebody who was dealing multiple ounces in a week. They're going through, and one ounce is 28 grams. Just so you know, average user, depends on the user's going to be maybe a quarter gram to three grams, depending on your usage levels. So when you have 28 grams, depending on who you're selling to, if you're selling to people that are using slow at a quarter gram per person, that's a significant amount of users that can be hit with that. Also, in 2016, we recovered stolen property while conducting operations with the task force. In addition to the drug task force, I work all our property crimes as well. I have one case specifically in which we had firearms that were stolen onto someone's house. This firearm right here was recovered at a controlled buy in which our drug dealer brought it to the controlled buy and was, had it in his waistband while delivering the drugs. We did not let that deal go through. We were actually going to stop that person immediately because I knew about the firearms. I knew the target. I knew, I was able to relay all this information, so we were prepared that there possibly could be a firearm involved in this controlled buy. It just kind of shows the information gathering information that's sharing between the agencies. Stolen packages, that's methamphetamine one. We had a couple going around stealing UPS boxes and packages from the doorsteps of people in town. Our patrol officers were able to identify and stop them while doing that investigation. It morphed into a search of the residence in which we came up with 65-plus grams of methamphetamine that was inside the residence as well. In 2017, I don't have too many details on these as they're still in the court system. The first one is a pound-level marijuana supplier. In this picture right here, this is six-and-a-half pounds of bud, leaf-style marijuana. There are silicone containers right here and right there, and there's approximately 216 grams of a, what's called as wax marijuana. They can put it in those vaporizer pens for smoking that way. It takes roughly an ounce of marijuana leaf to make one gram of that. He had 216 grams of that. It's basically high potency concentrated. The wax is 90-plus percent on the active ingredient, which is THC, whereas your actual marijuana is going to be closer, hovering somewhere around 30%. The other one that was very recent is a pound-level methamphetamine dealer. In this search warrant, approximately $80,000 in cash was seized due to the investigation. That one is still kind of, it's a very fresh case, but I thought I'd let you guys know. The information for that search warrant was developed partially by me, so not all of our cases stay in the city. However, the information comes to us, and we use each other to find the bigger suppliers outside of the city. Every single one of these suppliers more than likely can be tied back to the city of River Falls in some way, shape, or form. For heroin overdoses, generally, it's not a problem here. This year, we have seen an uptick in them. We've had, from what I know, I've been, three heroin overdoses this year, which is a lot considering I didn't have any, I don't believe, in 2016. One of them did die, and the other two did survive with the use of Narcan and EMS, getting there quickly. With those cases, they're very hard to work, but we are coming to a conclusion on one of them, that we were able to, the overdose and death, we're able to find the supplier. So River Falls to date, since December of 2014, I have written personally and executed 50 search warrants, and that is just within the city of River Falls. On top of that, to date, I've probably assisted in executing search warrants outside of the city 50-plus times. It's hard to tell which, how many that is. Generally, when I do go outside of the city, I create a report, assist other agency, but I don't have a way to say if it was a search warrant or controlled buy or anything. In total, from 2000, December of 2014, I've generated 177 cases. Each case is going to be more than likely controlled by a search warrant informational, which then leads to a search warrant or other operations that we've done. For seizures, we've had success in some monetary forfeitures. To date, today, we have $4,100 that we have seized successfully that the courts have granted. This money will be coming to, back to the city here. When we seize something, if we seize it via going through the state system, 50% of those seizures goes directly back to the school district. The other 50% goes to the police department. I'm still waiting on hearing for $3,186. That's still in the court system, still being decided. And the last thing I want to talk to you guys about is the Somerset Music Festival. This happens every year. It's a music festival consisting of rave and electronic music, techno. A lot of drugs are present there, mainly going to be cocaine, MDMA, ecstasy, LSD, and mushrooms. All your psychedelic drugs are going to be there. Most of the time, all our arrests that we come up with there are going to be from Chicago or well out of state. Where the problem persists and why we get involved is because there are a lot of residents within the St. Croix Valley that attend this music festival. So what they're doing is our residents are purchasing these drugs and either overdosing or having things stolen from them, possible sex assaults, and that's just kind of what happens with some of these drugs. So these are a few pictures of what we see every year. This bottom one was this year, and this one, and this one were last year. There's a large crowd. This year, the numbers were down, but generally, what it happens is we only deal with the suppliers of the narcotics. We don't deal with any personal use. So we generally get five to six major suppliers out of that every year. That's all I have for the presentation for you guys right tonight. If you have any questions or you just want to talk, you want to find out what more I do, you want to talk, find out exactly what kind of work a particular case takes, give me a call. I'll sit down with any one of you at any time. We'll make, I'll make some time, and I'm more than happy to discuss how I work. Any questions at all?
Got a quick question for you, Ryan. How much are you seeing in the school district working with Officer Godfortson? I know there's some, unfortunately, that's started to creep in. Have you, in the, in the three years you've been in that position, I would assume the trend has gone up, but could you talk a little bit about, about where we're at in the school district and how that's going?
Yes, the school district is really hard to work with as far as, not the school district itself, as far as for how we work as the task force. We don't like to use minors for any informants or anything like that. Excuse me. A lot of it's going to be prescription drugs, your Adderall, OxyContin, stuff like that. It's harder to detect. I have worked with Officer Godfortson in the past on a few cases, and generally, kids that age are a little harder to talk to. They don't, they're not as open as adults are because they have a feeling, they have to project themselves as the big bad drug dealer that doesn't talk about anything. So they're, those organizations actually are a little tougher to get into, but slowly and steadily, we are winning the race, I think.
Seeing a little higher frequency or a little more pickup in that type of activity, or has it been pretty?
It goes up and down. Sometimes there's a lot, sometimes there's, there's, there's not. I mean, everything, the last, I think, two K-9 searches that they've done at the school, I've been involved in with Officer Godfortson, and I don't think, both times, I don't think we've found anything.
Oh, that's good.
So it has been going down, whereas before in the past, I do know they have found quite a bit.
Good, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I have a quick question for you, too. Do we have a successful rehabilitation program in St. Croix and Pierce County?
They do have drug court, which, when I refer a case to the district attorney's office in Pierce and/or St. Croix Counties, one of the things that they can do if the person's found guilty is to order them to drug court instead of confinement. I don't know the exact success rate on that. You'd have to talk to them more about that, and by them, be the judge's clerk of court's office, see what their reoffender rate is. As far, as soon as it gets sent to the DA, my, I move, I pretty much, I move on to the next case, just to keep going, just so I can keep up with the quantity of cases that are out there.
And I was also curious if, you know, I'm a big fan of preventative measures such as local events, recreational activities, such as pools, parks, and gyms. Is there any type of preventative measures that you recommend for our community?
As far as to keep narcotics out?
To keep the youth out of trouble.
The biggest one that I always, I guess, would suggest is educate the parents. Parents, ask your kids what they're doing, who they're doing things with, where they're going, when they're going to be back. If they know, if the parents know who they're hanging out with, they can stop, because sometimes it just takes one person that somebody hangs out with to send them down the wrong path.
So essentially, be involved in your kid's life.
Absolutely.
Don't forget that they've got lives outside of mom and dad's home, and, you know, make sure you're caring what they got going on, who they're hanging out with.
Absolutely.
You know, their circles of friends, extracurricular activities, all that kind of thing. Cool. I just want to thank you for all your hard work in the last three years. I know that our newspaper is filled with a lot of articles between St. Croix County, Pierce County, and Polk. Then you look at the Twin Cities and a lot of that pipeline coming from here.
Yes.
It's really impressive on the work that you guys have been doing and a lot of the guns, drugs, and the kids that you guys have been impacting and families. It's pretty impressive. Keep up the good work. impressive. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I just have-
Go ahead, Todd.
I was just gonna say, you mentioned the grant was like fifty thousand dollars a year. Now that comes from the state, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now that doesn't seem like very much money to me.
It's not.
Okay. So I guess, what's, what's the magic number? I mean, what would, what would change things?
I, I don't know. I can't, I, I don't know how to answer that question with, given an exact number. Some years, it's, it is worth, it is enough and some years, it's not. It depends on what we're gonna do. It depends on if we're, if we're in need of a new camera, which can run upwards of five thousand dollars. It depends on if, how, what kinda cases we have. If we're only buying an eight-pound, which is three-and-a-half grams of methamphetamine, we only need two to three hundred dollars for that buy. But if we're buying a full pound of methamphetamine, we need, we're gonna need closer to eight to ten thousand. So it all depends on what kinda cases we have at that time.
Todd kinda asked, that was one of my questions about the money, enough money. What about, you know, you said you got seven members on the task force and like you were saying, the cases keep going up. Would, is that enough members? Do you think you need more? I mean, have, have they talked about getting more members on the task force for you guys?
Yes and no. It depends on what, how we're gonna work each case.
Okay.
If we're gonna work each case and do more, we wanna work up the chain a lot more, which we do. It would be nice to have more people on it. If we're just gonna chase the, the locals around, basically, we, we've been doing a pretty good job of that right now. We have been getting a lot more cases though, that are more complex. We're spanning jurisdiction lines as far as not only from ours to west central, which is Dunn County, Eau Claire area. We're also expanding over to, over state lines. We're doing a lot of stuff in Minnesota, St. Paul, especially anything heroin that comes straight from St. Paul or Minneapolis. So we're working a lot with other agencies over there. So it just depends on, and again, it depends on the case load. There's some days where I can't keep up with it and there's some days where, you know, it's, it's a nice, easy pace and we don't have everything going on. So it, it's hard to answer as far as personnel. It's always good to have more people.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else got any questions?
I got one last question for him. In regards to heroin and methamphetamines, what is the burden on social service cost to certified foster homes? Are they going up?
Again, I would not be able to answer, answer that question. That one's going to be, you'd have to contact Human Services over Pierce or St. Croix County. If we have a search warrant that involves a mom or dad or both involved in the trafficking of narcotics, we will contact Human Services ahead of time during the search warrant so that they're with us and they execute the warrant with us and they can take care of the kids right then and there.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Officer Miller. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, move on to administrative reports. Julie, you wanna take administrative report? Or Scott, you wanna take administrative report?
I have a few things I think you saw at the council.
Good segue from the report. Appreciate the report from investigator Miller. That reminder that the city council took a proactive initiative to add the one FTE to this, to the police department budget. That was entirely a, a policy directive from the council and it seems to be paying dividends for the community. That FTE allowed the police chief to assign an additional investigator and, and then by extension, be able to assign someone to the, to the team. So I think kudos obviously go to the, the three cities that have stepped up to support this. Obviously, the counties have been important and are playing a lead role in that, but the three larger cities have really helped and that's, that has a positive impact on the entire region by their support. So hopefully in the future, more, more municipalities can step up their support for those services. Customer appreciation event on August seventeenth was a success. Despite the worst weather that I think we've had in, in the eight years I've been here, we had the highest attendance and had to restock our food supplies twice. So it, it was a good turnout. And it's, it's really, I really appreciate being able to see the entire city team working together on, on one project. It's, it's fun to see the employees getting together and doing that for our customers and we're happy to invite folks down and enjoy the day. Residential parking permits begin September first. This will be the last council meeting before that takes effect. Those residential parking permit rules are on the city's website or you can call the non-emergency line of the police department or the, the four-two-five-oh-nine-hundred number at City Hall for more information. September fourth, City Hall offices will be closed for Labor Day. September sixth, UWRF classes begin. I think we've started to see some influx of students involved in extracurricular activities through the, through the university or, or in, in the community and doing practices and other things. September seventh, six-thirty is the final tech talk for the Kinney Corridor renovation project. The title is Recreation and Tourism. It's scheduled at, for the River Falls Public Library. Finally, September ninth, from nine AM to five PM, we, as the council approved their, our support for that, the, the region's most scenic art fair along the Kinney River. There will be likely more than sixty local and regional artists. It's a day-long event, food vendors and more, and it's a day to enjoy, day, to enjoy a little beauty, man-made beauty next to the natural beauty of the city. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
You got anything for Scott? Otherwise, we'll move on to comptroller's report.
The comptroller's report for July twenty-seventeen. General fund revenues through July were four million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars, which is forty-eight percent of budgeted. This compares with five million, two hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars at the same time last year. The main reason for this difference is the distribution of property tax revenues, of which a greater portion has been allocated to other funds. July revenue includes two hundred and eighty, ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars in shared revenue and one hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars in transportation aids, which are similar to a year ago. Expenditures through June were five million, one hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars, which is very similar to a year ago. Spending is still consistent with prior years at fifty percent of budgeted amounts, which is two percent lower than last year at this time. Net revenues over expenditures at the end of July is a deficit of two hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, but this deficit is expected to be eliminated with the receipt of property tax collections in August.
Thanks, Diane. I just got a quick announcement. I'd like to counsel to look favorably on my appointment of Judy Edgar to the EMS Service Advisory Board through May of two thousand and twenty.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve your appointment.
Second.
How in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, move on to closed session. Recess in the closed session per Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five IG for the following purposes. Conferring with legal counsel for the government body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, to wit, the Town of Troy versus the city.
Just, just a point of clarification. I'm sorry to interrupt. It's nineteen eighty-five one G.
Oh, what did I say? IG?
IG. Just wanna clarify that. Council is not expected to reconvene, take action, and I will be asking the council if they'd be willing to go to the foster conference room, but we will come back here before adjournment.
Sounds good.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We move into closed session.
Second.
Hold on, please.
Mr. Watson will say.
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Gagne?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
We're in closed session.